Welcome to the Richmond City School Board Meeting, Monday, July 15th, 2019.
Well, all board members, will all board members who are present, please stay here. Ms. Dor.
Here.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cosby. Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Steen. Ms. Page.
Here. Do not afford that. And for the record, Ms. Gibson is all the time. Next item.
Next item on the is the adoption of the agenda. It is my understanding that there need to be some amendments done to the agenda. First, for close, we will add legal. Also, then we need an item under added under district activities and move staffing to 6.01. Sure. Sure. For the amendments to the agenda, adding legal to closed session, adding an item for district activity, and moving the item regarding staffing to 6.01.
Where is the staffing one now?
6.05.
Open it up.
We just, we ask your principal directors to be able to answer these school specific questions, and we just thought it would be fine.
That's fine. I just, I want to write down. Do you need your motion?
I think that we approve the agenda as well.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Barlow and attempted by Ms. Burke to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? Any opposed?
It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda, 1.03, approved the minutes of the June 17th, 2019, Tuesday meeting, and the special meeting of July 1st, 2019. It's one of the things that those who are.
Need a motion?
To move.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Barlow and attempted by Ms. Burke to approve, adopt the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Since we have known the minutes have been approved as presented. Next item.
The next item is the education.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
We have two types of awards to give out this evening. The first is in recognition for receiving the 2019 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. And that award goes to four of our schools. So I'm going to read off all of the schools and the principals and those who are here. When I'm done reading all the names, they'll come up, take a picture for everyone. So first is Bedford Middle School, Principal Melissa Reiki. Second is Sharita Sears, Principal Albert Hill Middle School, now Principal at TJ. Third is Richmond Community, Tanya Massingberg. And fourth is John Marshall High School. We have one more award, and this is the Virginia Department of Education Highest Achievement Award. That goes to Open High School, and we have here Candice and the Chandler as well. So we have show of appreciation. All right. And great, everybody get together. All right, one more round of applause.
Next item.
The next item is I agree it's public information, and I don't have any speakers inside of the main information.
If you have members in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please come forward, sign in and state your name if you're speaking on behalf of the organization. We have five minutes.
Yes.
Speaking as individuals, we have.
Good evening. My name is Melandra Colton, and I am the newly elected president of the Richmond Education Association. Greetings to you, Chairwoman Page, Vice Chair Dor, the school board members, and Superintendent Cameras. I'm delighted to be with you all this evening. I was able to steal away from our leadership academy at the University of Richmond, and I just came tonight to reintroduce the Richmond Education Association to you. According to our bylaws, we, the Richmond Education Association, serve as the city's spokesman for education, advance the cause of education for all individuals, promote professional excellence among educators, gain recognition of the basic importance of the educator in the learning process, protect the rights of educators, advance their interests and welfare, secure professional autonomy, unite educators for effective citizenship, promote and protect human and civil rights, and obtain for its members the benefits of an independent, united education profession. We, the RDA, look forward to doing this in conjunction with the Richmond School Board. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Members in the audience, if you'd like to show support, please show your support lines, wave your hands. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Hamilton Glass. I'm here today, my public art is here. I've done a lot of work in RPS schools. I'm really here today to really, with RPS, I've done a lot of work with RPS, this, I'm going to work here in three different schools, Oak Grove, Rockland, Boston Elementary, and Malmston. And so I just want to reiterate the importance of having a public art, which is art in general in the schools, and in doing it in the community, in the engagement way. So I'm working with RPS, I'm very possible doing stuff at Howard's industry in the schools, but then also use the community to help me. So I just really wanted to highlight that in part how operate that is and how that encourages more involvement.
Thank you.
Good evening, students in the school room. My name is David Jones, President of the RPS. I just wanted to come tonight and say thank you for the support, and thank you to Mr. Hurley for a lot of hard work. I believe that we go over the third annual King City Summit this year, coming up next through August 16th. So everyone is invited, it's for our young men, but we have a great talent, a lot of new crops, Dr. Sapini and a couple of other great leaders of our sector. Like I said, I want to, my name is David Jones, say thank you, and that you know that we are all working hard on the city championships, we have some details, we need to bang out and work out, but it looks optitively, it's like it can't happen, it should happen. With your, your support, you know me, I'm a come, I'm a real, I'm a come with love, I'm a come with the facts, that's just true. I'm going to always support our young men in the city. We have, we have some questions that's asking me that I really can't answer. So I said I'll take to the school board and see maybe make this match, like why does George Wood have one home? Everybody else sitting at this table wants to ask me. Not one of you ever went to high school that had one football home, that's unheard of. It puts our kids at a big disadvantage. My friend Tom, he's actually asked too. That's, when I get asked that question in front of half the leaning, like, oh, why is that? That's a question I can't answer because that's above my pay grade. So, like I said, these are issues and things that I want to take the time for, just to see, just to, just to put on even playing field, not asking for anything more than what any other school would ask for, or any other program would ask for. So again, like I said, I just brought, brought those questions to the school board that's asked to be due to the city. Like I said, I hope you may, that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Ties, this is our deputy. I'm here in response to some recent published articles regarding transcript issues and the guidelines and so on. I'm only here to, to enlighten you, to what some of the problems are that I experienced in my two years at the high school, and I can only speak to experiences at this particular school, so please keep this in mind. We have six school resource officers, four administrators, and one superintendent. It is all balance. In 2016, when I began, students replaced in classes that they didn't want or were prepared for. AP classes should have students who can pass basically with writing, SLL, and I had AP students who passed the RPR. I also had two creative writing sections that particular year. Grades 9 through 12, it was an elective, kids were shut into only one, who signed up for it, had an elective arrest paper signed there randomly. I was told when I asked questions, they would catch all class, holding classroom, it was everything else to do. Now, guidance is responsible for both AP and SAT testing. This is not SLL testing, that is totally separate thing, it's just AP and SAT testing only, which is why I've included following events, I've included demonstrate sort of protocols that we have been following at the practice for this school. AP classes in 2016, 2017 were not authorized by guidance, despite multiple efforts to get them done. AP English was stripped during report cars, and students receiving a 6.5 or severe violations. This was in law three years prior as well. AP testing. Students informed me of multiple AP testing violations due before I began. And in spring 2017, my first year, we did open off campus and testing the regularities and once again not reported. I watched a student who had just finished testing or completed test, had an unsecured location, had requested the proctor, who was the AP coordinator at the time. Students later complained that the proctor wasn't on the phone during the test and had even ran during the test. The tests were not going to be credited, I knew that, but I couldn't say anything to colleagues, except colleagues within the department, and I should have said more. Transfer students, when students transfer into the state of Virginia, they adapt the verified credit. So I looked at the information on the VDO website regarding the JF verified credits for transfer students, printed it up, gave it to a senior that it applied to, told him to take it to guidance, so he could get an advanced diploma. I received a call data that afternoon from the guidance department saying, wow, where did you get this information? In the fall of 2018, I had a volunteer have two classes of senior remediation, specifically for seniors to have the reading and writing SLLs. Students were full powered for that remediation class after the beginning of the school year because suddenly they had to have a class needed for graduation to back the school we started. A junior transferred in my senior SLL remediation class in the middle of the school year. Well, this is great, it's an SLL remediation class, however, he was in a freshman English class. How this all worked out, I don't know, but we often have students in more than one English level at the time. The SAT strip testing in spring of 2018 almost got nullified by seeing students alphabetically no one had read the testing manual. Calculators hadn't been timed for testing day, and they were having trouble. I've told you, you have good people making bad choices. Whatever the situation is, this is just the beginning. And the reason people don't come forward is because this is my documentation protecting me from harassment, bullying, and retribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, respectful, respectful, enjoy my time, Mr. Kane.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Board Members, I come with pleasure, and I come with excitement, and I come with an announcement, even to Mr. Cameras, even to your administration. This is the time of year, my name is Charles Wilson. I apologize, I was going to say, my name is Dr. Sapini, but he's already here. We're both brothers from another brother, you can take him. This is the time of year where our city as well as cities across the nation embarked on what we call our National Night Out Day. For many that don't know it, many that are acquainted, this is the time of year where communities come together to make a strong, bold statement to other communities that we are not going to tolerate the crime that plagues our community. The gruff goes out and says it's time to take a bite out of crime. Richmond Public Schools has been a very, very valuable part of that, and I want you to know that, and I'm very grateful. I stand boldly before you because the records reflect that our organization, the Jeff Davis Stiglitz Civic Association, is the only civic association that has ever received a proclamation from the National Association of Town Watch, the largest attended National Night Out. What does that mean? Anytime you can gather for 19 years, 3,000 and 4,000 people, and we come together, we're giving away over 700 book bags, 3,000 hot dogs at one time, 1,200 hamburgers, 1,500 bags of chips, and over 2,500 drinks, and more and more. Those are the kind of activities, and then to educate, to see you all as board members come out into the community at a time where the kids don't see, see you, that's great. So I say to you as those that I have reached out to, that reaches out to that community, I want to thank you in advance for your support. I know some of you all have been on vacation, so I take that happily, because I know that's probably why I didn't hear from you. But we look forward to seeing you out there. Mr. Cameras, we talked earlier, we was glad to see you. As always, we were glad to see you out in the rain last year, Don, and the rest of you all, Felicia, and Dr. Sapini, and the rest of you all. I know you have your own communities, but we want you to come out, and even if you don't get to our community, go to somebody's community. And I know you will, because I see the looks on your face, but if I can recall some of our other administrators, Miss Els, I really don't know it, Mr. Hughes and some of the others, Henry Hughes, come out and join us and see a different light of myself, and see a different light with some of the others as we embark on the safety. I do want to close by saying that I'm very, I came before this board and I asked you and pleaded with you to support those that needed the help during a time of tragedy. You did. I thank, I can't thank you enough for providing the office center for Macalia Dixon's family. I can't thank you enough for reaching out to the young man that was shot three times, and there are others, and I enjoy the fact that I can come to you and ask you for the help, and that help is received. So again, thank you so much, all of you, for what you're doing, and I see your National Night Out. August the 6th, come eat a hot dog and a hamburger with us. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Anne Forrester, and this past 2018-2019 school year, I was one of three ESL teachers at Bushall Middle School, where we had approximately 330 L students. For the 2019-2020 school year, I am currently one of two hired ESL teachers for an estimated population of 400 ESL students. It's my understanding that Bushall has had our ESL population double in the past three years, yet our ESL staff remains around three or four teachers. Now, more than ever, we have a need for caring and highly qualified ESL staff since our students are more often new arrivals to the United States and require regional support. While I'm grateful for the prospect of additional ESL staff at Bushall and other RPS schools, I can't help but think we're missing the points. As a school district and broader school community, learning English cannot and should not be the only priority we have for our help students. That is because right now, as we speak, there are members of our school community that are scared and anxious at the possibility of their friends, family, and neighbors being taken away by immigration and customs enforcement. Right now, there is a future RPS student sitting in a detention cage at the US Mexico border who is alone, sick, and terrified. My L students come to my classroom having experienced unimaginable hardships and trauma, yet they are expected to sit in classrooms of 40-plus students and take standardized tests in a language they don't understand, on content they had no prior experience with. I know you guys aren't HR, I know that this is like a different body, but I just think that this is like something that we have a whole need to address, not, not just individual teachers, not just individual schools, individual communities, because this is part of our entire city. So I would like to challenge you to think more honestly and thoroughly when you are requesting more funding from the VDOE about what our L students need, because more ESL teachers is only a start. We need proactive decision-making that has our students' well-being in mind, not reactionary decisions to keep away bad publicity or compliance violations or what have you. And lastly, if you are adding 12 more ESL positions, fill them. Fill them this summer with caring and qualified teachers. From my experience this year in dealing with so many students and so few staff, I can say that there is nothing more disheartening as a teacher and educator than the promise of more help and support that never actually comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kirsten Williams, I'm actually the ESL department head at George Wood High School, which is one of our largest populations. I'm actually very thankful for Ms. Forrester, because she actually completely knocked out my entire first book. I would just like to reemphasize everything that she said. George Wood kind of came under fire this year, especially in regards to our ESL department, and one of the main critiques was they didn't understand how we had three full-time teachers and three contracted substitute teachers, and still did not have enough time to service all our students. By the time we left the school year, we left with 346 registered ESL students, 196 of them being Level 1. Okay, that's 57%. All six of us were trying to assist in full-time classrooms with our ESL Level 1 students so that we could better prepare them for sheltered instruction, COCHOP classes, et cetera, et cetera. We proposed many, many years for sheltered instruction, and I see on the agenda that that's one of the things that we need. My second point, after reemphasizing everything that Ms. Forrester said, is that we really need to consider the students who come after our Christmas break. We had approximately, I believe the number was 60 students registered just after Christmas break alone, and what happens is those are all Level 1 students with not a single word of English, barely hello, how are you? Then they come into our classrooms, which increase our numbers to 40-plus per classroom, which also means that we now have to take progress that we've been advancing since September with the students who have been there since September, and have to completely restart in order for these students to catch up. It's not fair for the students who have been there since September, nor is it fair for the students who have been there since January, for newcomers. So I would propose that there is some sort of maybe latecomers program instead of a newcomers program, so that we can continue the advancement and the rigor in our classrooms with our students who have been there the entire school year while servicing the new students to give them the foundation they need for the years in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tori Pearson. I'm the lead ESL teacher at Elgar Thompson Middle School, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight to give another voice of the ESL teachers in this conversation we're going to have later. And I just want to share a little about the process that we go through identifying English learners, the work that our team has done, and some of the challenges that we face with that process. Though our work is very demanding, you'll see that time and time again, RPS ESL teachers have consistently said yes to working hard to get the job done. The issues we encounter are primarily procedural. For a long time, for example, there was miscommunication about the home language survey procedures. So at the beginning of this past school year, Ms. Tyra Harrison asked our ESL teachers to create an efficient system for our building to ensure that we don't overlook even one potential English learner. We, as a team, said yes, and we collaborated with our registrars, our administrators, our counselors to resolve this issue. So now my building, once a month, my colleague and I review the surveys of every single student who enrolled that month, and we verify which students are eligible for ESL evaluation or services. In terms of counting English learners and keeping our enrollment numbers as accurate and updated as possible, which is on the agenda tonight, we encountered some systemic issues again that tend to make us have to work hard instead of working smart. I don't think it's any secret that Aspen has its quirks, to say the least, but one of the biggest issues I see is that when we're tagging English learners, all of these different fields tend to be confusing and repetitive and misleading and sometimes outdated. So with a lack of written procedures, those fields are often completed incorrectly, or they might be left blank due to this miscommunication and confusion. And this leaves ESL teachers to say yes to becoming detectives. We have to stay late, we spend our planning periods in the records room pulling individual student cumulative folders to try to piece together all this data and fill in the gaps. I cannot tell you how many lunches I've enjoyed sitting on the floor of the records room. The ESL team this year has worked tirelessly to implement better procedures and correct these issues to better serve our students. Beyond our daily work of instruction, relationship building, family engagement, data reporting, assessment, and providing high-quality ESL services and strategies, our teachers have continued to say yes to go above and beyond for our department. Thirty seconds. A group of ESL teachers took on the task of writing a comprehensive manual, which is being approved by the VDOE. We have the new T-Saw and Reading Masters cohort. We have a team developing curriculum on their own. We have teachers who are being certified with the Praxis Test, and we'll still have a long way to go and a lot of work to do. I think we need to give credit and visibility to our ESL teachers for all the work that they do. We're doing the best we can, what we have. I hope to hire a coordinator soon, and I hope we show that ESL is a priority in RPS. Thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any others from the audience to speak at this, at this time, this concludes our public information, period. Next item.
The next item, are your board action items, 4.01, receive for action proposed policy provisions.
Good evening, board members. Regarding your policies, this is a second read of the proposed policy. Comments were due to, or questions were due to my colleague, Ms. Lily, by July 1st. There were no comments or questions that were received by either her or I. So therefore, the second read of the policies looks a lot like the first read, with the exception, with two exceptions. The first exception is under 1-4.1. In the first read, there were changes that, that were proposed about the hiring of family members and school board members. The hiring of family members of school board members and of the superintendent, based on what was said to Ms. Lily in the previous meeting, those changes, those proposed changes have been removed. However, what was kept in there were the changes reflecting the training requirements, which are being required by law. And under 7-2.5. And under 7-2.5, that policy would have tracked the hiring of family members. Since the, since, again, what was said at a previous meeting was taken out of 1-4.1, the information about hiring family members was also taken out of 7-2.5. Are there any questions I can answer about those two changes?
Need a motion?
I move that we accept the proposed policy revisions as described and as presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to, excuse me, to approve the proposed policy revision as presented. Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Dr. Sepini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. The next item is to receive for action personnel actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Cameron. The recommended talent office actions for the school board meeting scheduled for Monday, July 15, 2019 include: the nomination of 99 employees, the change of contract of 90 employees, the resignations of 80 employees, furlough of eight employees, returning from leave of 11 employees, the retirement of eight employees, the reappointment of 60 employees, the non-renewal of 22 employees, the termination of 18 employees, and the name change of two employees.
Ms. Burke?
Madam Chair, I simply don't want to vote.
Thank you.
The next item is I apply for business, receive the minimum random of understanding for the Embrace Carver Foundation.
Board members, this is the MOU that came about, or draft of the MOU that came about as a result of your vote at the last board meeting, establishing the, the Embrace Carver Foundation was established, and as was explained at that meeting, we had to do an MOU to set out the terms of the, of the agreement between the foundation and the school board. So, this is the draft that came about. I worked with members of the Embrace Carver Foundation leadership to, to come up with this. A lot of the things that are in here are required by law, and I can take any individual questions.
Thompson?
Yes.
So, the MOU, the meeting, stop and read?
No, you don't need a second read. If you would like to take this as a first read, you can. You don't need a second read, but if you want to go ahead and approve it tonight, you can certainly do so. This was, we talked about all the terms of this, but we can certainly do it tonight as a first read, if there is any feedback, if anybody wants to add any more feedback.
I move that we, thank you, Madam Chair, I move that we approve of the MOU as presented.
It's been moved by Ms. DiBallo and seconded by Ms. Door to approve the MOU for the Carver, Embrace Carver Foundation as presented. Any discussion? Mr. Young?
Mr. Young deferred to me to recognize our great first-intrigued member, Deborah Corless, who is, has been adopting schools across the city in Carver. Has really, there's few people that are so passionate and loving and giving to school scarcity, so thank you for that.
I also just want to recognize Principal Giles, who is doing an extraordinary job at Carver. Had the great pleasure of joining Carver and some community members and members of our team this weekend for RPS Shines to clear out the basement so that they can have, be a recipient of the codes of lab program, where they'll have a washing machine and a dryer, which is very exciting, to make sure that all of our families have access to laundry services and just really appreciative of her leadership and certainly Deborah, your partnership of good work to support Carver Nation. Thank you.
Ms. DiBallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have some, some thank yous, and I won't beat at that horse, but I also want to thank Ms. Giles and Ms. Corless for being here tonight for their advocacy to, to not only start, start the foundation, to be so involved with the school, doing some of these projects, and also to take the time to negotiate this MOU and bring us to this point in the process. I also want to note that Jerome Lejans and Bill Velash are very involved with the, with the foundation as well, and I am just as pleased as pie that we're going to have a, an MOU set up with Embrace Carver, and I hope that this continues to be a great partnership between Embrace Carver and the school, as well as Embrace Carver and the school division and school board. And I'm also very excited to be a little more involved, so thank you very much. And I think it goes without saying, but I implore my colleagues to vote yes to pass this MOU. Thank you.
Hold the question. The motion was made by Ms. DiBallo, seconded by Ms. Door to approve the MOU as presented. Ms. DiBallo?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sepini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes. Mrs. Page? Yes. Motion passes eight zero. The next item is administration business, and I believe we moved up the standing update, so that's the first item, the standing update.
Good evening again, board members. Since the last school board meeting, we've gained a true picture of where we stand in regard to vacancies, since we are now well beyond the teacher contract submission date. As listed here on the slide, we are currently at a 65% fill rate, and as was requested at the last board meeting, we have provided in detail by school what the current vacancies are. We do have some hiring events scheduled. The last one was held last week, the last Wednesday. The next one will be held July 24th, followed by another event on August 7th.
Ms. DiBallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you give us an idea of how many vacancies we have compared to the number of actual staff positions, private teachers? I understand this is, these are the vacancies versus the number filled. If I may, I think you're interested in sort of a retention question or not, just, just what percentage of gosh, rules we need to fill, if others has, has, we're about to have a retention practice track.
Yes, we can circulate that number. This is typically our thing. Thank you for that information. The next item is 6.02, receive an update from the joint construction team.
Good evening, school board. Unfortunately, we have a brutal update today. We hope to have the guaranteed maximum price of the project ready to go tonight. That is not the case, because some of the package bids are coming higher than anticipated. We're spending a lot of time negotiating to get the best possible price on these schools, so we don't have that information ready tonight. Just as any item, every single day, it's a top of the list, we discuss it every week, and as soon as we have this available, we plan to bring that back to the board and the public, showing their attention. That said, in terms of schedule, we are back on track. There was an issue with George Mason. This has been corrected, and that the school is back on schedule, so no major issues there. I also did want to highlight that in August, we plan to bring a demolition of multiple buildings, for the current George Mason building, so that the board can adopt a stance on that, and then bring that to our board to ultimately report. Have you answered any questions?
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. For the salaries, and that sounds a little bit mean, so, for the revised prices, so, I know you said you all were been on this, probably, yada, 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 but when did we anticipate giving that information?
We hope to have them tonight. I think right now, we're thinking they have updates, so we can get this through.
Ms. Burke?
That's definitely our goal, but at the same time, I did say last week, we had this meeting, so, I guess.
And if I may, then, Ms. Page and Ms. Owen can speak to this. This is largely our process driven by the city's construction management team, and so, I'm sure they are working as fast as they can to renegotiate all the pieces, and so as soon as, as soon as they have some numbers, rest assured, we'll bring them to you. I think, well, someone at this age can attest to the fact that I ask at every meeting multiple times for these updates, so we'll provide them as soon as they're.
And also, just to add to that part of that conversation, you know, asking for that information, because it's also important, so that we get the final number, we all know how to proceed with the new George Wood. So, that's still on the table, and it's still in discussion. Thank you.
The next item is 6.03, receive an update on rezoning and facilities planning.
So, why are you still up here? The rezoning, the initial rezoning options were brought to the RAC in June. I didn't want to discuss at a high level some of the summary feedback that we're getting in regards to those options. First, the Fox and Cary communities have laid in very heavily about the option two, option which creates a parent between both Fox and Cary, where Fox becomes a K2 facility and Cary becomes a 3.5 facility. In order to get a better understanding of what some of the concerns and opportunities are here, we do plan to hold additional community meetings at these locations. There's also some feedback that the initial options don't go far enough, specifically that some folks want to see closure port to the table, to forge a discussion of no the RAC waiting project, which is both Bellevue, Swan's Borough, and the current Elgar Thompson building. Additionally, RAC has asked for the proper TIS and the Richmond 300 engagement committee to meet, tend to sort of find some sort of middle ground on the projections. There is a belief that the proper projections are more conservative than those of the Richmond 300, or working to set that outcome down. And then finally, there was general feedback that the rezoning meetings need to be more better, so to get a better turnout, and more layer of community participation. So, Dr. Harris might work to set the double up as a part.
Ms. Door? Ms. DiBallo? Ms. Burke? Ms. Owen?
First of all, thank you for acknowledging that we have, I've heard similar feedback, especially as it relates to the population projections, and I think that it speaks to a larger theme of just making sure that we have a process for getting authentic feedback and then adjusting accordingly, and I think, I just want to make sure that the committee is really, it's a, it's a group of professionals, and a lot of times, we're asking of them, and so I want to make sure that we're authentically engaging and listening to them as we go through this process. So, I just want to validate that you've done that, and also underscore, like, yes, we're about continuing to do that. And then I lost my train. Oh, the final request, and I think this is probably related to Dr. Thorpe, you're doing, Dr. Harris, is to get the materials for the committee out to the committee sooner so that they can have a better look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to say, I'm not surprised here that you guys also heard a great deal from the Fox community. I've certainly been getting my shared feedback as well, and I think it's, it's critical that we take the opportunity, take as many opportunities as possible to have these discussions. I've, I've heard from people who, who have fears about the plans, I hear from people who are excited about the plans, and I think generally, I hear from people who don't necessarily have all the entire context of how this process is moving forward and, and how we're going to continue to tweak the plans and make, and get more community feedback, so I appreciate any effort to schedule more meetings. I'd also argue that it would be good to have one at, at Carver as well. We see that the Fox-Cary plant, for example, also impacts Carver Elementary, but I may just be biased in thinking that we need more in the second, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fairfield Elementary and Woodville Elementary. Did you just think anything about that, or did I miss that?
No, we haven't received any explicit feedback about those.
Oh, you will. You most definitely will. I'm very concerned, and the next meeting is what, the 31st? Because the plan of action is to have Fairfield as, what, 3K through 2, and then Woodville 3 through 5?
Yes, similar to that.
That was one of the proposals. I wasn't at the meeting. So, that came from the company group, or that came from the first person? Proper?
Proper.
Well, whoever? I'm just, just baffled that any professional organization, business such as that, would suggest moving Fairfield Court and Craven Court. So many needs, totally free and or reduce much into, and then put all their responsibility on one principal and his or her staff, because in the end, we're all held accountable for the same things, but being realistic regarding the resources. Rest assured, we'll be at the next meeting. And also, I just, I'm surprised that the committee didn't speak up regarding that. I thought I read somewhere someone did, but it wasn't substantial enough or?
So I think that it was a lot to take in because we didn't get the materials out in there. So it was a lot to take.
Well, that should have been out.
I'd also share that I think that the purpose of having RAC is a sort of these issues we're talking about right now. Because proper is a third party, he doesn't look interested in the dynamics and the culture of the city. So having the RAC, you know, sort of time in, up here going now is critical. I think that those discussions are, are important. So thank you for raising that issue.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have an inquiry, but I do want to editorialize for a moment and like perhaps some of my colleagues. I'm very disappointed to date, though, when I acknowledge that we're still early in the process. Because candidly, if I mean real frank, we put off this process for a really long time despite some of our requests to initiate it a lot sooner. And now we've arrived at a place where frankly, I'm really underwhelmed. I mean, nothing's been suggested that frankly, isn't just rehash something akin to Scott referenced a moment ago. Something's been around perhaps for a decade. So frankly, we've got to do a lot better than this because this was sold as something really grand and an opportunity to address a lot of our deficiencies in RPS. And frankly, what's materialized to date in the way proposals is, we'll do nothing to remove the needle. So I am grateful to the committee because frankly, the committee has done a lot more than our consultant has. So perhaps we should be paying them and not our third party member. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
My question, now that we have that, is about the maps, the big map. Are they available in the, some central place where people from the committee and others can come and look at them?
I have a moment. I know we talked about this at the last Jason TV.
Yeah.
To create some of those and have them available.
But I mean, he had them. Where are they? Did he take them away?
No, I think it was Scott Lawson.
Because we need those. Thank you.
I also want to go back to the question. I don't think that the rezoning is going to be this overbooked to all of our needs. I don't think that we should build an add that just outside. I think at most, knowing some of the bodies around state content and boundaries, we have to get this school's other culture to them. We do something with diversity, we've got more than our schools. But this was never going to solve every single overcrowding issue that we have in RPS. I just want to keep, make sure that we continue to talk about that, so there's not the expectation for this process.
I have a comment. Regarding the proposal of Cary, Fox, and then Woodville and Fairfield. 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 Ms. Burke and I and Superintendent, we attended the Equity Conference sponsored by the Virginia Department of Education, Virginia School Board Association. And what was really, it was a common theme in a session that we attended. And from localities, northern Virginia, central Virginia, east west, various parts of the state. When we talk about equity, really, what does it look like? You know, we talk about the fears. What is a fear? And I'm speaking on this because this is a real problem. And we have, we have to really have those uncomfortable conversations. And if we don't, we're going to be back here at the same place. And then when we talk about diversifying our school district, social economics. So it's not, it's not about class. And I know what I'm saying is uncomfortable to talk about. But it's not just about class, it's about social economics. And if we really want to move this school district forward, we're going to have to have those uncomfortable conversations. And I just want to put it on the table. Because we can never move forward if we are still living in the past. What do we feel for all of them? Every child deserves a high quality education regardless of their background, zip code, what have you. We've got to move forward. And we need to help people to understand. All children are deserving of a high quality education. So I just want to put that out there because it just really, really bothers me that here in 2019, we're still having these conversations.
Ms. Cosby.
Thank you. I'm very glad that we are going to improve the city in our conversations so that we can make sure that our numbers are in alignment with the various projects that are underway, housing developments, et cetera. And second, I'm happy that we are having additional community sessions. I think this does speak to, underscores something that I know probably Mrs. Peaty, Dr. Sepeany has mentioned that we have, this is a serious undertaking. And for just non-meetings, it's just not enough to really come up with some comprehensive and well-thought-out options. And yes, right now, perhaps we're seeing some cookie cutter versions. It's a place to start. So as long as we understand that it's a place to start, but it's not a place to finish, I think that is critical. But definitely having more sessions is key. And getting that information from the city as well. Because even the last time, as I had mentioned many times before, the data just did not support what was actually happening in our neighborhoods. The data that we received from our demographic consultant.
I just wanted to reiterate that we are still very much, as Ms. Cosby indicated, in the draft stage. And so, I'm fairly confident whatever our final rezoning plan, well, we don't have it yet, that there's going to be a lot of iteration between now and the finished product. I would welcome, though, any ideas that haven't been surfaced. And so certainly, if there are board members that have different ideas or a different approach to increase the diversity or to be more prudent with resources, I think we get to the best outcome when we have the most ideas and are able to really debate them in those rezoning committees and ultimately at this table. So if you have an alternative, let's bring it to the RAC so we can hash that out with the community members. Whatever it may be, align here, consolidation here, or new zone over there, whatever you think might be helpful to achieve the goals. We need the best ideas from the board and frankly, from the community. I think as Mr. Timmons said, because they were absorbing and sort of reacting at the same time, I think we were really at kind of stage one. I'm excited for the next, the next several meetings where folks have really had the time to absorb the information and really think through what might be some alternatives. Because there were some really interesting conversations that were bottling up around some of the tables about different ways of achieving some of these schools. So in essence, an all call for ideas, alternatives. If what is currently good on the table is not satisfactory, and I understand those who feel that way.
Ms. Cosby. And I'd also like to add, I think it's going to be very important for this board, we have several overarching goals. So many that, you know, even the committee said, okay, well, what, well, what do we go by? Is it to diversify? Is it to, is it to relieve the overcrowding? Well, what is this like? I do think that as a board, we could have to think about this and perhaps give maybe a little bit more direction and parameters for this committee because the goals are vast. And at the end of the day, if we say, hey, we want to make sure that we have a very diverse, inclusive school district, well, what does that mean? And that's something that the committee can take away. So, okay, that is our top goal or one of our top goals. If it is to relieve the overcrowding, okay, well, what does that mean? So I do think that we do have to provide some, another level of, of setting some parameters too. And then just fine tuning some of those goals and narrowing them down to better help guide the work of the committee.
And to add to what Ms. Cosby said, because in the South Side, realistically, we's all in. It's not going to solve all of the issues in the South Side. It's really just going to touch the surface. So, yes, moving forward. Thank you.
The next item is 6.04, receiving update on RPS shines.
Good evening, Chairwoman Page, Vice Chair Door, Superintendent Cameron, and board members. I'm here to give an update on our RPS shines effort. Also ask our community partnerships coordinator, Brady Hart, to join me, who has been on the ground at over about 20 sites now, holding RPS events. If you remember from last year, we kicked off RPS, RPS shines. We had over a thousand Richmonders and 75 partner organizations donate their time. And we wanted to have the same initiative, but we really wanted to make this a grassroots initiative and really go to the locus of change at the school level and making sure that we were picking dates that were for our community members as well as our school principals. So what is it all about? It's about creating safe, welcoming, attractive learning environments for RPS and ensuring our students and families build ownership and pride in their school community. So again, we want to do this with the community, not to the community. So we wanted to create partnerships with community organizations across our region. And again, really shift from more grassroots relational model. So what we did is we worked with every principal and sent out surveys to every school to just find out what would be the best day for their community. Versus last year where we had two overarching days and tried to do everything over the course of about two to eight days. So really meeting the schools where they were. And our beautification day, just this past Saturday, we had, was our biggest day where we had 150 volunteers out on Saturday. Everybody from Wayne Church RBA, who was helping out with Hill Middle School, and Grace Carver and the Kiwanis Club, who helped out Carver. And then also, we have really been strategic about getting corporations or organizations such as Bonds Of Course to wrap around our bathroom blitz and not only sponsor the labor, but also the facilities as we continue to work on our bathroom blitz. So we're excited that they have, in addition to working with Carver last year, they have agreed to work on Armstrong this year and will be redoing several of our bathrooms at Armstrong, both the labor as well as all the supplies. So again, trying to be a little bit more strategic in our efforts so that we can match partners with schools directly. And then lastly, we weren't able to expand this last year, but we wanted to make sure that murals and artwork was a key part of RPS shines this year. So you heard Hamilton Glass, who is a local Richmond artist. And what we wanted to make sure is that we weren't just coming in and doing a mural and leaving, but have you actually engaged with that school community about Richmond history and create a mural that's a product of the community. So again, a more grassroots relational model to even creating our murals makes up our three components. Our beautification day that every school will have, concentrating on some priority schools to continue our bathroom blitz, and then again, engaging with community murals with many of our schools. So that work is underway and we are continuing throughout the summer. And for anyone, school board members, our community, we still need support and we need you to help us make us shine even brighter. So we're looking for both volunteers as well as financial resources. And if you would like to help, you can go to our website, RPS shines, Brady Hart, you can reach out to him directly and his amazing team. And then I would be remiss if I didn't thank Hands On, who has helped us manage all of our volunteers through their platform. They've been a great partner and continue in our second year to help us coordinate all of our volunteers. So again, would like to thank all of our volunteers and partners. We know every year we're going to continue to get better and encourage everyone, if you haven't already, to come out to our RPS shines event. Thank you.
Questions?
Ms. Burke.
Thank you so very much. I look forward to seeing the data later in the year when we compare last year to this year. The school I went to, they must have really been on tax because I couldn't get in the building. There were just a few cars out there. But I tried. I was a few minutes after one, so everybody was going straight to work. I was at another meeting, and I want to share this, it was announced that VCU, all the freshman classes, 700 of my students, will be at different schools on campus a day. So the person that's the coordinator for that announced and gave you compliments. So, great. Gave you compliments at length and it was really a big crowd of people. So people wanted to know more about this project. So thank you for all that you've done. I don't know why we don't have another mural in 7th district, but I'm sure you'll get one.
Yes, and Armstrong had a great day, Vanessa, at Hands On, like that work, but they must have been.
The cars were in, they were parked there. It wasn't that minute, but the cars were there, but it wasn't meant to be, so. I was coming from downtown, as I told you, but it was, thank you so much, all of you too.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you so much. This is so exciting. Not all the schools are listed in here. Were there some schools that opted not to participate?
Listed in the presentation or on the hands-on website? Every school should be listed on the website, so we can double check. But every school has a beautification day, but we'll definitely double check. Some of the dates may have passed and they have been taken down. So we've already had about 15 or 16 already happened. So it's, it's throughout the whole summer, so that may be the issue. We will triple check.
Thank you.
The next item is 6.05, receiving update on dreams for RPS goals set.
All right, good evening, school board. Happy day. I'm pleased to present to you tonight our draft goals and targets for two more of our Dreams for RPS goals. Tonight, we'll talk about Goal 6, related to satisfaction, and Goal 4, related to teacher retention. We'll start first with satisfaction. I will make the caveat that tonight's data, that survey you've already seen in the deck, does not include our family targets yet. We'll bring that at a subsequent meeting as that survey just closed in May, June, and so we're analyzing that data now. All right. So Goal 6, which will start with addresses increasing student satisfaction, family satisfaction, which again, we'll address at a future meeting, and staff satisfaction overall, and then for individual staff.
Ms. Jackson, one second. It's not, it's not up there? It's not, or not?
It's not, or not?
So, satisfaction is defined as agreement with questions aligned with a variety of critical domains such as safety, perceptions of respect, or perceptions of school culture. So, as we reflected on the data to use to measure satisfaction, we of course wanted to use data that was already out there as we consider surveys fatigue as well as transparency of data. And so, are proposing using survey data from two state issued surveys. The first is the Virginia Department of Education's Working Conditions and School Climate Survey, and that's administered to students, teachers, and staff from 4th grade through 12th grade, and I'll explain a caveat in there, as well as the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, Virginia School Climate Survey, which is administered for students. And that's administered in alternating years between middle and high school students. So, last year, that survey was administered to our high school. This year, it was administered at our middle school students. Because the surveys in, both of these surveys are extensive, 51 questions. From the surveys, we've opted to develop an index measure for each group based on responses to specific questions that cover critical components of satisfaction. In addition to choosing an index because the surveys are longer, they do also cover some topics that aren't necessarily related to satisfaction. So, for example, on one of the teacher surveys, you might see a question such as, "Students understand the consequences for their behavior." While that might be important information for a teacher, that's not directly related to a teacher's satisfaction. So, this helped us narrow down to a set of questions which we felt most directly honed in on satisfaction. Another way that we helped to select the questions that are part of the index is making sure that they were identical questions across both surveys to ensure that the data really could be interpreted the same way for the ones with our elementary and then high school students versus a different survey for the middle, and then knowing that that would alternate each year. So, the index that we've selected for students uses identical questions from each of those surveys, as well as the teacher-staff index was a selection then of identical questions from the VDOE teacher and staff surveys, and you'll note that we added one additional question for teachers. We'll look at the indices in just a moment. An individual is considered to be satisfied if they agree or strongly agree to a set percentage of questions in the index. We'll look at what that percentage is in just a moment. So, let's first look at a couple of notes and caveats that I think are important as we think about this data moving forward. The first is one that I've already mentioned, and that is to allow for consistency from year to year in comparison of data. That's part of how we selected the index since middle or high school students will get an alternating survey on different years. This past year was the first year that the VDOE administered their survey, meaning when we look at the proposed targets, our baseline is 2018-19, which is unlike what you'll see in some of our other goal setting where we had opportunity to look at data from previous years to help us determine that baseline. When we think about response rate, generally, RPS had about 20% lower response rate for elementary and secondary students as related to the state. We had a comparable response rate when we looked at teachers. So, at the state level, elementary and secondary students responded about low 60s, and we were at, sorry, elementary, 63 and 43, we were at 82 and 61, so about 20 percentage points lower, with 62 and 63 being the teacher response rate. So, we were comparable state. The VDOE did not calculate an estimated staff response rate, and that was actually something that we did not prioritize in our first year of administration in being as clear as we probably could have with principals about encouraging custodians, instructional assistants, et cetera, to take the survey. So, that is something that we will prioritize in future administrations to help get our response rate up as well. We don't, if we're thinking again about comparison data, have access to the raw data from the state and other divisions. So, again, you're not going to see the kinds of comparisons that you saw with state economically disadvantaged or neighbor rates. And as I noted before, we'll bring inherent survey data to a future meeting. So, let's take a look at the... So, for students, there are four questions that roll up into our satisfaction student, student satisfaction index. Number one, I like this school. Number two, I'm proud to be a student at this school. Number three, I feel like I belong at this school. And number four, I feel safe at this school. How would we consider if a student was satisfied when they took the survey and we analyzed their responses to those four questions? A student is considered satisfied if they mark agree or strongly agree to all of the above questions, so 100%. So, two examples of how that would play out. Student A might strongly agree with three of the questions and then agree with one. We would consider that student to be satisfied. Student B might agree with three of the questions but disagree with one of them because we didn't have 100% net agreement. That student would be considered not satisfied. And that is the model that we've used when we look at the baseline data in a future slide. When we look at the measure for our teacher-staff index, we're looking at seven questions for staff with an additional question for teachers. So, again, remembering that these are questions that would appear on both the teacher and the staff survey, which are asking the exact same question. Number one, I feel respected by teachers and other adults in this school. Number two, sufficient resources are available for professional development in my school. Number three, I feel respected by the school's administrators. Number four, I feel comfortable raising issues and concerns that are important to me with school administrators. Number five, I am treated with respect by students at this school. Number six, I feel safe at this school. Number seven, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. And then for teachers only, an additional measure, teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction. So, we think this sends an important message about what we as an administration value in terms of staff and teacher satisfaction. How would we consider a teacher or staff member satisfied? So, a teacher or staff member is considered satisfied if they agree or strongly agree to 75% or more of the above questions. So, you'll note that the students with only four questions, we want 100% of those questions agree or strongly agree. Because we're looking at a broader range of domains and more questions, we would 75% for staff. So, what does that look like? A teacher perhaps agrees with seven of the above questions but disagree with one. We would count this teacher satisfied because they're above that 75% threshold. Or a staff member agrees with half of the questions that disagrees with the other, they would not be considered satisfied. So, again, you'll see that as our bar when we look at our baseline. Because we did not have any particular state comparisons, we did broad national research to inform general thinking about examining school climate and its impact on a variety of things such as achievement and retention. Of course, we'll draw some connections this evening as we look at Goal Four as well. So, you'll see research studies which associate positive outcomes for teachers and students with that type of positive climate, as well as the influence of school administrators on teacher retention, something that we all know to be true and part of why many of our questions in the index relate to the relationship with an administrator. So, let's take a look at our baseline data. Again, remember, this is our calculation based on the proposed index and the business rule for satisfaction related to that particular group. So, if we look at students on the left, let's first look at the breakdown. We think about those four questions, and answering agree or strongly agree to all four of those questions, 61% of our elementary students are currently responding as such. 41% of our middle school students are responding as such, and 36% of high school students are, or all student average of 47%. When we think about the adults in our system and the eight questions that were designed for teachers with that 75% bar for agree or strongly agree, only 32% of our teachers would currently be marked as satisfied, 47% of our staff, or 35% of all adults. So, if we agree that this index is an appropriate measure of satisfaction, we have significant work to do. And so, with that idea, again, of our significant work and in knowing that changing culture and climate is hard work that takes time, you'll note again that our baseline is 47% for students, 35% for teacher and staff, and we propose a 5% gain over each year over the next four years so that we are ending with a target, well, certainly not our end goal, an incremental goal that we think is still achievable in this time period of nearly 70% for students and 55% for teachers and staff. Because of the timing of when the VDOE surveys are administered, we don't get the data back until the summer. So, around this time next year, we would be able to formally report out on the 2019-20 satisfaction rate. However, we know that we need a marker along the way, a performance indicator, and so another reason to use this index is it allows us the ability to benchmark that at points throughout the year. So, we will formally administer a mid-year satisfaction index survey in November so that we can see how we're doing towards those either four, seven, or eight questions, and should likely have that analyzed since January, which is probably a good predictor of where we are towards our goal. I can stop there for questions on Goal Six, or I can continue through Goal Four and then answer questions collectively.
Ms. Supini, Ms. Young, and Ms. Owen.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. One, do you have the number of teachers and students that you, or just the percentages?
That we, that were surveyed or that responded to the survey?
That responded?
Yes. I can get that, my ECA colleagues who are in the back might be able to even get that during the course of this meeting. If not, it's actually easily convert the percentage to the number for you.
Okay. And the second one is, would you happen to have by school?
Yes.
Can I get that?
Yes. So, you're looking for the response rate by school? Percentage and size?
Right, the actual numbers and also the schools.
Yes, absolutely. And you want that for all three surveys?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Valvo.
Oh, my apologies. Well, first, I want to convey my gratitude and commendation because I'm really excited about this work and arguably, of all the really important objectives and goals in this strategic plan, for me, this is the most important. And it occurred to me when I was reviewing the data, reflecting on it, that if we were a profit shop, we would have been out of business a long time ago. And then I reflected a little bit more and said, well, my goodness, aren't we, I think only something like seven out of 10 children born in the city of Richmond ended up, for every seven out of 10, for every 10, only about seven used rich public schools. So, the market does speak and for the reasons recited here. But I wanted to share one tangible recommendation rather than just editorializing. Specifically, in the last two months, we've had a lot of conversation about our principals, or I prefer to call them CEOs, and I think any CEO would recite that the buck stops here. This, for me, is a lot more, what you're revealing, these statistics, for me, are a lot more important than even SOL data because they speak to the real culture in the buildings and what we're capable of in each of those buildings. So, I would encourage us acknowledging, I think, that all of our CEOs would recite that the buck stops here, that this is an important component of how we assess how well, how well a principal or CEO is doing. Candidly, and I want to, again, convey my kudos to the team, but there are all kinds of different metrics, and we've reviewed those metrics relevant to some personnel decisions, but this is really, really important, in my opinion. This assesses what really matters. So, just want to share that with the administration, but also with my colleagues to consider and contemplate on as we go forward.
And just to follow up on that, Harry has already confirmed that the first cluster meeting in September will allow opportunity for principals to engage with this data and set plans against it.
Ms. Owen?
Following up with Dr. Supini, with that school, will you and the principals be looking at individual responses to the question, in other words, how many said they feel safe in the school space? And maybe that was, everybody disagreed with that?
Yes, absolutely.
But they all agreed something else was fine, so that you can target in?
Yes, that's what will take place at the September cluster meetings, is each principal will get a copy of their school level survey for staff, for teachers, for students, so that they can dive into individual questions while focusing on the index overall.
Ms. Valvo?
Thank you. So, I have a question related to how granular we get with regard to this data. So, we can identify by school, do we identify by grade level, things of that nature, because what I'm concerned about is whether our staff, the teachers, will feel that it's anonymous enough in rank feedback.
It is. Andrew, is it available by grade level or just at school level?
I would have to check. So, they've suppressed a lot of the data if there are fewer than certain numbers of responses to try to help with that anonymity problem.
Anyway, the report that we're able to share with principals is just going to the school level. But we may have access to other data, but again, we don't have that drill down. And then Dr. Supini, Andrew was able to provide at least the number, would you like it here or I can send it in? Okay, 985 teachers, 264 staff, about 25, 2,600 elementary kids, 1,000 middle, about 2,600 high. Yeah, that would, wait, that's why our response rate was... So, our overall secondary response rate was only 43%, and that did a combination of the middle high. I'll move on to Goal Four. So Goal Four is our goal regarding teacher retention, to increase teacher retention overall and for suburbs. So as we thought about how we would measure teacher retention, the Virginia Department of Education did not have established business rules regarding this type of measure. However, the Virginia Department of Education has partnered with faculty at the University of Virginia, and those faculty presented at a recent Virginia Teacher Retention Summit, using specific rules then that allowed for statewide calculation of teacher retention rates. So we will use those same business rules that were used at that teacher retention summit because it also gives us access to statewide data and is something that can also be calculated independently. So those business rules are to first count the number of full-time teachers, meaning here at least 0.75 FTE in RPS in a given school year. We then find the percentage of those teachers who return to RPS to teach in any capacity the following school year, so relatively simple on a surface. So for example, 4,000 teachers in 1819, 800 came back, we would say we had an 80% retention rate. The important piece of just having specific business rules has more to do with the notes and caveats. So for example, in this data set, teachers who returned to RPS in a part-time capacity are counted as retained, although they would have not been counted in the initial number because they were, had less than 0.75. If a teacher returns the following year but moves out of the classroom into an administrative or other non-teaching role, they are not counted as retained in this data set, even though they are retained by the district, they are not retained as a teacher, and we're specifically looking in this data set at teacher retention. And under this approach, terminations and retirements are not counted as retained teachers, as they're not retained, but recognizing that retirement is something that might be outside of our control and a determination makeup and something. There's a fair amount of natural research on teacher retention, and very much related to the work we were talking about in Goal Six, related to school climate, very much related to school leadership, and teachers' decision to stay or leave in their position. And so some of the studies that are highlighted below, you could link through, suggest that specifically looking at teacher satisfaction and improving working conditions can aid in their likelihood of staying in the classroom. And I'll also specifically point out the second survey, which, excuse me, study, which also calls out the impact, negative impact to achievement from high levels. We examined the teacher retention data then in every division in Virginia from 2012-13 through the 2016-17 school year, and comparatively to what you looked at with the attendance data grouped that into three categories, or comparison purposes data for the state, data for divisions with 60% or more career reduced, friends, lunch, and then again, our neighbors in school divisions, Chesterfield and Wrightgoe and Hanover, as we all know, have notably lower percentages of economically disadvantaged students. So this data is grouped by group, so the five columns on the far left are the career reduced, lunch over 60%, ranging from 2012-13, 2016-17. The next one over is our neighbors, Chesterfield and Wrightgoe and Hanover, the rest of the state, and then RPS. So I'll just call your attention to the final percentage for each of them, starting with RPS, had a retention rate of 79%, the rest of the state at 86%, our neighbors at 87%, and other divisions with comparable number of students with career reduced, 100%ages were at 81%.
Mr. Waldo.
Can I do one more? Do the last slide? Okay. So because we wanted to continue to work with a particular faculty at UVA, they are currently analyzing the 2018-19 school year data. So here you'll see in the interim, we're using the teacher retention rate from 16-17 as our baseline, which is the 79% that I shared. When they finish their analysis, observing their work with us on this, we can adjust the baseline as appropriate. By 2023, we aim to increase teacher retention to 85%. This aligns RPS with the current state average for retention, which as we noted was 86%, and surpasses that of other divisions with high numbers economically disadvantaged students, which was around 81%. And we propose the following annual target while we work towards this goal, and you'll see that spread out at inching up about 1% each year with a little bit of a slight happy end. In terms of reporting out our progress, we'll know by late fall, early winter, each year, the retention rate for the previous school year. And then in addition to the, in Goal Six, we talked about the survey that we would administer on the Satisfaction Index. Because we know that teacher satisfaction is a strong indicator for this goal of retention, now that we will be able to look at that data as a likely proxy for how we're doing towards this goal, we will add a specific question for the teacher survey explicitly asking them if they intend to return to RPS the next year. So with that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Waldo, Ms. Holm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm a little confused, I want to go back to our notes and caveats section. So I thought, I heard you say that we would not count terminations and retirements as...
We're counting them as not retained.
Oh, we are counting them as not retained.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That helps clarify that. And then the other question, another question I have is related to how does data will be presented to us, but will this also be broken down into subgroups, so perhaps first through the, one through three-year teachers or something of that nature?
That's something that we're, yes, absolutely, since the goal does speak to subgroups. We're exploring with the University of Virginia, just since they have the broad data set, what is possible, but we certainly want to look at race, gender, grade level, those are the types of things that we're exploring, and then potentially guest tenure.
Awesome, awesome. And then I just want to say thank you for presenting this early on in the process, I 'm confident that this is a priority for us, so I appreciate it.
And I'm just going to go along with that. Thank you all for this work. It's tough to see, but I think it's very important to see, and I think having, again, having data really, really informs our work. So thank you so much for doing all this and sharing this with us, and we look forward to the upward movement.
Mr. Young.
I just want to connect a few dots for persons who may not know, we had a meeting immediately to proceed this one, and it was with Virginia Department of Education, and though I'm very grateful to my friends at Virginia Department of Education, candidly, I heard entirely way too much in that meeting, I heard way too much relevant to, if we implement this to fidelity, could have, must have been said 20 times, or alignment. And I will just share again my biases, when I hear that, it's, I know what it means, and it means more top-down, and frankly, that's, well, I believe, what more than anything dissuades our teachers from staying in the profession altogether, and I hope that we always, I hope and pray that we always remember that the teacher is the authority in all things, their students. Thank you.
And Jonathan, I think that's why you'll particularly like question E in the Satisfaction Index for teachers, teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about retention. There's one piece I'm sure just that I want to add to this about the retention, if we were to increase our retention by to 6%, which, I want to type this in, but I must not, that would equate to about 100 additional teachers retained over the course of the time.
So to share to your point, so the target increments, is that a realistic target is for me?
That going up 1%?
No more, maybe 1%?
Yes, very, so if you look at the comparison data then on Slide 14, going up to 85% is, puts us in line with the rest of the state, which is currently 86%, and our neighbors have an 87%, but it is notably above divisions that have other, populations economically disadvantaged students, which therefore may mean a lot of challenges.
So I guess the question really is, are we, you know, I guess lowering ourselves or lowering the expectations for satisfaction in the district?
Satisfaction or retention?
Well, retention, I'm sorry, retention.
No, our colleagues at UVA think this is a quite ambitious goal, keeping in mind, it does include retirement, and it does include non-regrettable attrition.
I agree with my colleague, Ms. Page, I do think this is a little low, especially given the fact that this is such an important goal, and we just heard, you know, some information that was articulated during the meeting before this meeting, but also was articulated about retention, about institutional history, and about sustainability, so the importance of maintaining, of retaining good teachers. So I would just implore my colleagues that we look at this, the ultimate goal, which is 85%, and look at, or have early discussions about perhaps raising that, and looking at substantial gains in year three and year five.
We will certainly bring that back. I will note that Jason has already far exceeded what the, our researcher suggested for this goal because of the priority that the administration placed on this, that 85 is deemed with these business rules to be very ambitious for us, but I think we'll keep that most certainly for discussion of other programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, I just really want to commend my colleagues Walter and Andrew, who are here with us from the University of Maryland at Virginia. I went to Maryland, that's, no, the University of Virginia, and have been absolutely tremendous on this project. Lot of love.
The next item is 6.06 received for first review program of studies.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Doherty, School Board members, to bring in the cameras. I am pleased to present to you tonight the draft of the Program of Studies for 1920 for First Review. We expect to bring the Program of Studies for adoption at the next board meeting on August 5. A little bit of background, each year, school divisions, including RPS, develop a Program of Studies that includes the specific courses and academic programs available to students for the upcoming year. We call these course offerings, therefore, you might also hear the term course offering guide, one and the same in terms of Program of Studies. In addition to the course offerings, the Program of Studies also includes information on academic requirements, some practices, and procedures that follow our policies. When this is adopted by our school board, the Program of Studies becomes the official source of approved courses and other important academic information, including the approval of locally adopted courses. The reason this is important, and we sort of refresh our memory back to our transcript audit, locally developed courses are allowed and are allowed to be offered for credit, traditionally elective credit, however, those must be approved by the school board before students can take those, and that was one of the issues that led to the removal of credit for some of our students back and through the transcript audit. Additionally, through the transcript audit and a review of previous programs of study, there, confusion was created by conflicting information or misinformation, errors, as well as potentially outdated courses, and misalignment with the courses that were in our student information system. This is the system that our schools use to create master schedules and to enroll students in courses, and which led ultimately to some scheduling errors and students taking courses that were not assigned the proper weight or the proper credit. We've attempted to address all of those factors in our Program of Studies, and we've been working in close partnership with the state over the past several months to ensure that the information in our Program of Studies is correct, and that we've mitigated the errors that the transcript audit revealed, so we feel confident that this Program of Studies we're putting before you reflects the courses that are approved for credit, but also accurate information such as course weighting, the number of credits, prerequisites, and the like. And to one other piece, in terms of just the overall background here, is while we typically would bring this to the board much sooner, we wanted to do our work and make sure that the courses we did add first went through our process locally, so we did ask schools for, schools had an opportunity to request locally developed courses, and those were reviewed with a committee and then decided upon. We also wanted to engage with content departments in the state, we got feedback on our course descriptions, feedback on our sequences, and the like. And so this is, again, continues to be, we believe nothing can be perfect, but we're optimistic that this is a strong step forward. Some key changes, this includes only approved courses, upon your approval, of course, that includes both statewide courses as well as locally developed courses, and the information that's contained therein, if there are any firm prerequisites or sequencing requirements as outlined by code that is in there. We've also been really clear on which courses serve as graduation requirements versus which courses meet only elective credit. That's through the second bullet, we believe that this has detailed and accurate information around all the other features, codes, et cetera, and this information is then uploaded into our Aspen system. So we cleaned out our old course catalog from Aspen and archived that, and so now what schools have available to schedule are only the courses that are in this guide. We've also included suggested sequencing to help schools, students, and counselors make choices about which courses should be the natural next step or the natural progression, so that we do not see that challenge on our transcripts. We are hopeful that that will enable more CTE computer sequences as well. We believe this is hopefully more user-friendly and eager for community feedback on that front, as well as the content. We've taken, we've removed, we've moved all of the academic procedures and sort of policy and information to the back in an addendum, and so the Program of Studies is, really only includes academic programs, graduation requirements, and the course offerings themselves, so we hope it's a little easier. So we hope it's a little easier to thumb through. This also does include, our course offerings include improved CTE offerings, as I talked about, I think, earlier on, in terms of some of the added programs like cybersecurity and energy power, which we're excited about. And then lastly, improved information and sequencing for English language learners and students taking certain tracks in exceptional education. So we really, we worked with the state to outline a course of studies for students so that they are receiving credit that also progresses towards a graduation diploma within their four years in high school. The program of studies really serves as a foundation for scheduling. And we've heard a lot over the course of this year about the transcript audits, and then the transcript audit was about much more than was what was in our transcripts. But it revealed some shortcomings on scheduling practices. And when we get this process right, it enables schools to make better decisions and support students and families in making informed decisions about course selection, path to graduation, and the like. So this serves as the foundation for scheduling. We did provide, I think, as I presented to you earlier this spring, we provided the course listing to schools already, so they have begun master scheduling. The, what you're being asked to approve, that, you're being asked to approve a document that ultimately will have received VDOE approval as well. However, in the meantime, the VDOE did sign off on us providing the list of courses so that schools could begin master scheduling. The reason I make that distinction is you might be asking, how can we begin scheduling if we haven't approved the course offering guide? And the reason for that is, we understand, the DOE has worked with us, and we understand the tension of time. And so while we want to make sure we've dotted every i and crossed every t in partnership with the state, they also have confidence in the courses we are putting forth. So if for some reason, the approved version has a course that needs to be removed, we certainly would remove that, but we believe that if that happens, that would be a very small number in the end. I think the other point here is, schools again have begun master scheduling in earnest, as well as completing scheduling for students based on their graduation sequence. And we expect those to be ready by the end of July and finalized in August. And so families will have the opportunity to request schedule changes prior to the start of the year, based on their draft schedule. And we will provide both middle and high school students' schedules before the first day of school. We will make those available, sending those home, but also available for pickup at the school. So we project the first week of August, students and families being able to pick up schedules and then make course request changes on the spot, so that at the end of August, when they come back to get their final schedule, they've done those changes before school rather than during the first few weeks of school. The final slide, I'm not going to read through all of these, but just to give you a sense of the local courses that the program of studies includes, these based on input from our schools and based on our requirement to demonstrate to the state a clear curriculum framework for these courses, these courses are the local courses added. The bulk of this list is comprised of courses for applied studies diplomas, which are reserved for students with IEPs who may not be able to access the general ed curriculum with accommodations and modifications. So many of these courses reflect the applied studies diploma, although some of these are generally available and meant to be for general electives such as creative writing and African American studies. With that, I will pause and take your questions.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Tracy. Excellent job, as always. Again, in the preceding meeting, there was some conversation relevant to principals, CEOs in the past adopting courses that they found some error in, and already spoken into my value system in this regard. So my question regards, thank you for this list. Do you have an idea of how many courses were proposed by our principals and CEOs that didn't end up on this list?
I can pull up that number, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do have a master list. I will say that there was not an extensive list proposed, and when we outlined the requirements that we had to have someone willing to scope out a description, the expectations for learning, the outcomes, and the general curriculum for the course, that list became much smaller. And so that is why, that is why that list is not as extensive as you'd expect. So there is no course that we said no to after meeting with our principals and our committee of department chairs that folks felt strongly they should have, if they were willing to help us do the work around the curriculum development. I should also say, one of the framing guiding principles, I, principals, P L E S, is we have so much work to do to strengthen our core curriculum, and to build out curriculum for our students with IEPs and our English language learners, and our, these existing courses like creative writing, African American studies, sociology, and the like, that we do not envision that this would, this list would not grow in the future. But in the spirit of taking on what we know we can do well, and really offer a meaningful experience to students, there are a plethora of state-approved courses that served many of the same intents, intentions. So a school might say, well, I want to offer astronomy. Well, there's an earth science two course that focuses on that. So rather than a locally developed course in that area, we then looked and talked with our department chairs about, well, would this be a better option if they state-developed course already? So if they, we try to help match up interests with approved state courses rather than having to reinvent our own wherever possible.
Ms. Berg?
Just asking for verification. ESL learners, we've heard so much about tonight, will there be any additions to this? I would see nothing.
Yes, so, let me, can I point to those, please? Those would be, if you go back. The ESL ones, yes. So let me, there are ESL courses that are state-approved, and we are offering those in the conditions of which those can earn students' credit towards graduation. They have to be taught by a certain licensed teacher, et cetera. There are courses here, however, that are also offered for English language learners. Those are history for newcomers, science for newcomers, math for newcomers. And so those newcomer classes are for students who are English learners, who some of our teachers spoke earlier about, that are coming with a very basic level or no level of English proficiency. The other English, the other courses for our English language learners are, that are being offered are really ESL, that's state-approved courses, and we've developed a sequence in partnership with our teachers to outline, there are legitimate state-approved courses that students can take for credit, and do not need to take the courses we've previously offered, such as ESL content slash math, ESL content slash science. Does that answer? Yep?
If I may, it does, but I am trying to understand, so the lessons are given in English, or even in native language, or then they transition, and how it's ever?
So typically, the newcomer courses, those would be taught by, those would, these would typically be elective credit courses, and these would not count towards your core content for graduation. And they would be taught intensive language acquisition support by our ESL teachers. But the other courses, again, the levels, this is in the course sequence options, based on your WEDA score, where you come in as a ninth grader, I believe we have three different, three different tracks, progressions? We have three different progressions over the four years, based on your incoming WEDA level, that gives schools and counselors guidance on how to schedule students with English, who are English learners. And the majority of those are credit-bearing courses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 6.07, receive an update on English language learners.
So first, just a quick overview, as we're talking about terms and acronyms, I want to make sure when we're talking about English learner or when you see EL, that is describing a student who has not yet developed proficiency in the English language. So students who are English learners. And ESL, or English as a site in the language, describes the program of supports and services that we provide as a school division to students who are English language learners. Some of the key issues, you all are aware that this is an area that we have significant work to do as a division, and want to present some of the most significant issues, although this is not an exhaustive list. And this is an area of, there's so much work to be done, as again, as we heard in public comment. I also do want to give a shout out to our teachers of ESL, who have, in the absence of division level, significant division level staffing, have really come together with my team to help solve some of these issues as proactively as possible. So very grateful for them. Over the past several years, the number of RPS students who require ESL services has increased. This is something that is not different from many other divisions across the country or the state. Additionally, in the fall, our teachers reached out as we were working to really get a handle on how our students who are English learners were being served. It became clear that the number of students our teachers were serving was more than what our count indicated. And so we, digging into that issue, my team and our teachers found that we had been undercoating or undertagging students. And when you, when a student has a particular additional demographic, such as being an English learner, there's something that you indicate in Aspen too, and that's where we pull our student data from. That student data goes to the state, and the state uses that student data to make assumptions about our entitlements and funding. The state uses, we report that twice a year. We report it in the fall and in the spring. And the state uses that data to make assumptions that then drive your budget planning. So our budget planning for 1920 is driven by our fall count. The fall count is done at the end of September. It was that fall count that was at about, under, about roughly 800 students. I want to be clear, while we were undercounting, we were not underserving. So the way we discovered this undercount was that we were serving students and our teachers were overloaded. And so digging into that, my team really did a lot of due diligence to discover, hey, the reason our staffing ratios and our assumptions seem off is because the number of students that each teacher is managing at the school level is higher than our records indicate. So we then engaged the state and asked, we, this is a huge assumption to make about data, so we wanted to ensure that we were getting this right. So we spent the past several months really digging in, ensuring, and validating that this was in fact accurate. And the way we do that is, a student is ultimately placed into ESL services based on a number of factors. First, we have the home language survey, which every new student in the division, regardless of presumed home language, ethnicity, or background, should take. That home language survey indicates the language generally spoken at home, and based on that, students are then determined whether additional screening for English language services is needed. The screener then leads to an official assessment of language proficiency. We call that the WEDA, you might hear that term. And then that level determines the placement and services that that student receives. So when we went and counted those students and working with the state, we went and looked at files to make sure that students had in fact first been given a home language survey, then screened, that was processed appropriately, then they were assessed appropriately, and their WEDA score indicated the need for ESL services. Anything I get wrong on that? Okay. Some of my team members here too have done the work. So that is, coming out of the last several weeks and working with the state, we have validated that this is in fact our count. Our spring count reflects these numbers, and because the spring count will lead to an updated set of funding that the state updates in September, we will then, we expect to receive those funds for that whole student population, which is, which is why we have added, we feel comfortable adding, both, we feel it is important to add, and we feel that we can fund 12 new ESL positions that were not in the FY '20 budget, because that revenue assumption was not yet in the FY '20 budget. We've, based on our student enrollment numbers, we've already, we've determined, assuming the current enrollment stays where they, where the students currently are, that the, on the slide, we've indicated which schools will receive additional ESL teachers as soon as we get them hired. So if you know any ESL teachers, please send them our way. And this is, you know, staffing is but one small part of a full range of services that we need to provide. And there are many, many things that we have taken on this year and need to continue to take on to, within our corrective action plan, to ensure that we're providing our students who are English learners all the supports they need, not just academics. As part of that, another part of, you know, folks, there's been some questions since we posted this in terms of what leads to undercounting. And again, this is under, or I would actually say it's underreporting in our database system, right? So streamlined procedures and processes, starting with ensuring every single student who was a new student to RPS receives a home language survey. Again, regardless of perceived home, home language or perceived background. That then giving, we have not really had strong guidance for school staff about how that is processed, and then how screening is done efficiently. And so once screening is done, that then leads to testing for proficiency, and that's when you formally are sort of coded as someone requiring ESL services. The absence of streamlined procedures and processes across 44 schools is one of the things that needs to under-identification, or I should say, underreporting, under-identification. Because the teachers in the building know the students who need the services. Even if a student was not formally identified or counted, the teachers in the building who, you know, not surprisingly, the teachers know which, they can figure out which students are struggling, and which of those students might be needing language services, and they might say, you know what, I need to test you. That could be one reason. Another could be, everything was done the right way, but the correct box wasn't checked in Aspen because the person responsible for that had a stack of papers and it got caught up behind. A third reason is, we're not leveraging all of our technology systems to do all of this. So we have a program called Elevation, which teachers use to case manage students receiving ESL services, but we haven't been making that system talk with Aspen. But that's a really great win, that's a great way for us to validate and double-check numbers. So in creating a manual with processes and procedures, that is going to help us streamline this, help us get this right. Placement of students, as you learned through the transcript audit, some of our English learner students were losing almost a full year of high school with courses that were not credit-bearing. We've since fixed that through our program of studies course sequence, and that should not happen again. If you find that students are enrolling courses that appear to be non-credit-bearing, to, this is my message to family, teachers, and community members, please email me personally. We've increased the number of staff and partnership at the Welcome Center. And so our instructional team and the team at the Welcome Center have worked in close concert to revamp some of these systems. And then in terms of supporting our teachers, we know that we need, we know that ESL positions are very hard to staff, and we've begun in earnest some efforts to increase the number of teachers who have. of teachers who have this expertise through partnerships with VCU to provide a dual certification and TESOL and reading specialization for fifteen teachers, that's underway. We are paying for the cost of the practices for teachers who want to pursue an additional endorsement. And we've really focused on increasing professional development opportunities, and we'll continue to strengthen that as we build out our proposals with, in partnership with the State Department. So these are just some of the few steps we've taken and have done so in a way that's really, again, want to thank our, our small but mighty team, but also our teaching staff and our ESL teachers who have really stepped up to help be part of the solution. Any questions?
Mr. Storm?
So, how long has this been going, I mean, how long has this been a problem? And how many years have our students and our teachers been overburdened and our students not? Do we not, us not receive the correct funding?
I think the short answer is, we're not yet sure. And the problem for the current year is so significant that our primary focus right now is ensuring that we've addressed this for the future. But let me, if I could call up our Director of Academic Support and Programs, Tyra. Is that, come on up for just a second. This is Tyra Yarson, our Director of Academic Supports and Student Support Programs. Do you know, do we have any information on when we'll have that down?
As far as the years, to your point of, our main focus right now is making sure we have what we need for the coming year. But we will get, in actual, so you can really dig back and see how long has this been going on. We've partnered with the DOE, and that's one of the messages that they have consistently shared with us, that this has been a challenge for a while, and so, the message that they share with us is the threat and the addressing it, but I will get those.
I guess, I, I mean, I'm sure everyone has known about it for a little bit, but it's just really upsetting, and I think, and I know you shared that as well, so, one, thank you for digging into this and bringing it forward. It seems like we're going to be able to at least correct it for next year, which is awesome. I do think, similar to how we've wrapped our arms around the Carver community because we have built them, I think there's some urgency around wrapping our arms around this community and figuring out what we can do to provide some additional support. I like the initial list, but I think we need to really, there's some urgency around figuring out around our fall.
Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, Mr. Storm, I trust most of what I wanted to ask. That said, I am curious about how, how confident we are we are going to receive these extra funds and, on the one hand, and then the second is, will all of those additional funds be used to support these students?
Do you want to, do you want to talk for the validation, work that we did with the state?
Yes. To your point of how confident are we in these numbers? The state really has worked elbow to elbow with us to ensure that what we were doing, number one, was the right process. And then, you know, really going back to what they knew of, what was reported before, even though you may see in SRC report that says we have this many students, that may not be entirely accurate because we didn't have the supporting pieces. So, I can say that we are exceptionally confident in the numbers because it has been a file by file, student by student process, and that is, you know, hours upon hours, you know, sitting alongside the DOE as well as our teachers, you know, really very meticulous in that. So, I'm not very confident in what we will do.
And I would say that we did not sign off on, we did not move forward to post positions and make additional FTE assignments until I, the DOE validated those numbers. And then, I, in terms of talking with Mr. Simmons and Mrs. Braga about those numbers, because these are formula-based funds, that we have a high, we do not have any reason to believe that our funding won't be adjusted based on this count, based on the way the state does our entitlement sheets.
Thank you. So, I agree that it's upsetting to know that this has been happening, but thank you for your, for your work to uncover that, to share the information with the public, and to do what we can to, to address this issue.
Mr. Stone? Thank you. I remember a meeting with Dr. Sapini and Ms. Page and I with the parents, that was such a wake-up call, sub-taco, and I think we've been really adamant that we needed to do this. And I would just like to point out, when we're talking about training people and expecting things, that we still have needs in our front office staff in these schools. And I'll stop right there. Thank you.
So, Dr. Evans, question to you. So we talked about expanding the partnership with VCU for attracting teachers that can provide those services. Are we looking at expanding the partnership with other universities like Virginia Union, Virginia State, University of Richmond, this right around the C area?
Yes, I mean, we, the area universities, I believe, know that we are, we've sort of put out an all-call of bring us proposals, bring us innovative ideas on ways to increase staffing for high D areas such as ESL, reading specialists, special education. So, been in conversation with BSU as well. This again is a pilot that's just launched, and VCU was ready to go. But we certainly welcome all of our community institutions of higher ed to work with us to propose ideas and, again, really looking for innovative cohorts that help us avoid the, you gotta work all day and then go to school late at night, three nights a week to, so trying to figure out innovative cohorts for these type of extended professional learning opportunities. But yes, the short answer is, we welcome partnership with all of those organizations that have been in conversation with that.
So my next question, with these increased positions, what's the plan?
With the teacher, with additional teachers who?
Right, to fill these positions, because what do we, that's been a month and a half away.
Oh, the additional positions that?
Yes, additional positions. So what's the plan?
So, we are, my talent team knows that this is high priority, and so, Ms. Bramble and I talked today about this being at the top of the list and making sure that this has an assigned talent owner, not just by school. Right now, our talent partners tend to focus on vacancies by school, but given the number here, we need a targeted ESL teacher outreach program, and so, we've just talked about that today. We can certainly come back with more specifics.
I think that will be beneficial to the board because, as my colleagues have said around the table, this should have been done yesterday. Since the first. Mr. Young and Ms. Burke?
Yeah, that was really set, well said, Madam Chair. I mean, at the risk of belaboring a point, I mean, sort of, part of that conversation started to sound eerily familiar with transcripts, and I just really appreciate what Linda said a moment ago, because we need to hold some folks accountable. A lot of folks accountable first transcripts than ESL. What's next?
Ms. Burke? Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you all, the teachers that stayed throughout the night. Oftentimes, people come and state their concerns during the public information, then they leave. But kudos to the teachers that remained here this evening to see things get through. And we do things better when we do it together. Being mindful also that ten years ago, eight years ago, ESL population, EL population didn't exist like it does now. So this is an opportunity to make things right, and we can continue to go on, we have so many to do, things on our list. What I'm asking is, let us as board members deal with the process. For those openings that you have that are applied, we're going to the colleges and universities this summer. We're spending time at different meetings and conferences. Give us the information, if you would just be, I'm not going on the list to see what jobs open, but people are always asking, and we're there with, I'm reading the VCU next week. If you would give us the list so that we can move forward on that. Because it's, it's, my concern is to have so many universities right here within my house, walking distance, and the partnerships should be much stronger. So this is an opportunity, I commend you for what you're doing, and I believe in the next three or five years, we're going to see a difference. And it's going to take time, but kudos to those persons that continue to believe in each child being successful. Thank you so much.
And just to echo what my colleague said, I have a meeting with Virginia Union, so please share the information.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to reiterate one point before we conclude this conversation, and that is one that Dr. Evans made earlier, that all of these young people were known to our teachers and our ESL staff, and they were serving them. But they were serving them without the resources that they need. And so, in many ways, as with many other things, we were doing a disservice to our students and our teachers. And so, this by no means solves the issue when it comes to our English learners. But at a minimum, we hope to receive the funding that our kids deserve so that we can have the teachers and the support that they deserve to begin to turn the tide on what is a significant educational challenge for us at RPS, and one that is going to continue to grow. And so, we have talked before about how the narrative of Richmond has been white and black, and we are now a city that is white, black and Latino. And I think this conversation is part of the process of reconciling that, and making sure that we are in a position to really serve all of our young people. So, enormous gratitude to our teachers, ESL staff, Tyra Tracy, for taking this on. It is yet another large issue to tackle, but I believe now that we have identified this, we are, we are honored.
Can I add one other, oh, sorry?
Ms. Young? Yeah, I was just going to inquire, what the, will we anticipate the dollar figure will be, we've discussed what we think we can do with the monies, but what do we think the factual dollar?
We're, our finance team is in the process of seeing if we can get a preview of that entitlement update. So I do not yet have that number, but we, we believe we can safely cover the salary. And of course, if there are any additional funds, those certainly will go directly to certain students. And also, our strategic plan and our operating budget has additional support positions as well. So this is an area that, you know, Mr. Camus and I both feel very strongly about investing in. And I do want to just underscore, similar to the various needs of all of our students, regardless of their particular services or demographic, I think the mindset that we have to have about our students who are English learners is that being an English learner is not an academic deficit. And that being an English learner, being an English language learner is not a disability, and that students are, this is a group of students have the potential to actually be bilingual and demonstrate the same academic achievement, if not higher than any of all of our students. And I think the approach that historically seems to have been taken is that there's somehow a belief that students might not be able, potentially safe from division guidance, that students may not be able to do everything. And we have to sort of disabuse that notion, if it exists. I know it does not exist among our teachers, but I want, it's hard to see the state of our ESL program and not wonder the extent to which that plays a role in the underinvestment here. Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Just one last thought. As our chairperson stated that we were in attendance last week for the State Department of Education's Equity Conference. Last year was Virginia is for Learners. This year, the theme was Virginia is for all learners. The time is now, I think it has a lot to do with our state superintendent, Mr. Carney, Secretary of Transit, Carney, he's awesome. But listening to Fatex Kennedy, Winchester Kennedy, we're behind. I was, I thought we were on the ball until I went to that conference, I really did, and heard what programs that are in place, what supports, and as Ms. Page stated earlier, even with the rezoning piece, other places have already dealt with it. So, rather than reinventing the wheel, let's see what they're doing as well. It's not always greener on the other side, because we have areas of specialty too. But right now is the time to get what is needed for children of color, children with disabilities, children that have other preferences. This is the time now to move forward, especially with the ESL piece. So I commend you on the, that's a lot of work. And that's another, that's another sub, you know, we have African-American, we have other, we have, racial, we have. Oh, so this is the opportunity, because in the next few years, we're going to be so, there'll probably be just one race, what do you think about that? Say what? Let me hear. That would be, that would be, well, let's let it happen right here in the city of Richmond, but thank you all again, but the time is now, and I believe the money's going to come because the State Department of Education, through our Secretary of State, excuse me, Secretary of Education, is ready. So that's flattering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is, your question, item seven point two, hold on, receive an update on CMT projects.
All right, good evening. Want to provide an update on the ten million dollars priority capital project we discussed last fall, and where we currently stand. So just to start things off, in addition to completing each of these projects, one of our big goals was to prove that we really did do our stuff these times and stretch every dollar as far as we could. I'm happy to share that for the most part, we have done this through a mix of competitive bid process, using cooperative agreements. We've been able to generate about a one point four million dollar savings as of today against these thirty-seven different projects. Couple of copies with this. You'll notice that a number of projects are currently in progress as contractors go in and do the work and try to identify additional needs and more to complete those projects and tap into a contingency fund, so that one point four million dollars makes a shift on. There are also a couple of projects listed here, Benford, we have not yet started, and the structural issues at John Marshall's have not yet started. Both balloons might also move, some of those will hit the financial numbers and from contractors. But all together, we're in pretty good shape. I'm really just impressed with the team and how we managed to roll certain projects up together to give savings, and to get to a point where we can add something like a carrier group to have a million dollars, and still we, one point four million dollars in kind of lack, so we're on pretty good big bond right now.
Ms. Young?
Well, frankly, though I'm not an editor, I think this should be on the front page of every newspaper in town. And striking to me, first, I need to convey my kudos, congrats to Darren and to Bobby and your entire team, but it's striking to me that at the same time, the new construction, largely being managed by our friends downstairs, is ballooning in cost, while RPS has been able to manage costs and significantly reduce expenditures. I don't think that's by accident, and that merits my, one, pointing, and it should be obvious to everyone, if it's not, now is, and two, I congratulate, job well done in stretching every dollar and prioritizing.
And two, I congratulate, job well done in stretching every dollar and prioritizing the taxpayer and prioritizing our kids and our teachers and getting them in more space that has brand-new roofs and brand-new air conditioning, brand-new windows and boilers. Thank you.
Ms. Door?
Well, it certainly would be cause for celebration if we ever had a positive headline about physical management at R P S. So I, I love you, Justin and reporters, but this is great. I love this layout, and I would love to see more layouts like this in the future. I have a question about Thomas Jefferson. I believe there was some athletic funding that came as part of this.
Yeah.
Do you have an update there?
Not today.
Okay.
I think that might have been attached to it.
I believe it was in the attachment, and it was my error to not include it. But I believe, Mr. Hughes, did you want to add on that?
You can also.
All right. We can add it to the list, the athletic projects, because there was also the John Marshall track. And there were a couple of ADA pieces that were worked on as well. So we will add that to the list and recirculate it.
Darren, so Ms. Paolo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that in mind, I, or the ADA portion in particular in mind, I would like to know when the last time we had a Division Y assessment of our ADA compliance was, and if we have many outstanding projects at this point.
Yeah, we can pull that together. We do have four projects right now underway, but that's a big, your question.
Darren, also, I just wanted to say thank you to the team. As I shared this information with my constituents, excitement. You see the work, Blackwell, Summer Hill, you see the tape, scampols. I mean, you're seeing public dollars at work. So again, thank you. And we didn't, didn't sit on, we didn't sit on it. We started immediately, started to work. So again, I just want to say thank you. And looking forward to a minimal project.
I also just want to say thank you. In particular, Mr. Simmons prioritized really utilizing the procurement process for the benefit of the taxpayer. We had been using a lot of carryover agreements. And once they started looking into things and really putting things out to bid, it became clear that, in many cases, though not all, there was really a cost savings to be had or by combining projects, as you see, various schools, there were discussions and negotiations about how do we put things together to lower the cost. And so while, you know, there's still work to be done and the follow-up number is still to be seen, I really appreciate that it's an enormous amount of work to do all that. It is easier and simpler to just continue what you've been doing. But we want to make sure we're doing it as efficiently as we possibly can. And so I'm incredibly grateful to the council for their allocation of $19 million for C I P projects in '20. And so we are beginning to think about a schedule for those over this year into next summer. As you know, maybe those things can't be done while you're in the building, but we're excited to spend those some time.
Thank you.
The next item is item 7.2, receive the financial statements for the period ended May 31st, 2019.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, superintendent Karen. In your package, you see me for your review of the monthly financial statement for the period ended May 31st, 2019. On page 3, you have a synopsis of our revenues that we were trading at this time in May. On page 4, I, something we always like to bring to our attention, are the other compensation lines because those typically run in the bank, but we know that because we track things like hourly pay and leave payout and those sorts of things, might be $5,200 because we don't budget it. They're budgeted in the $5,100 categories because, of course, we never know what that's going to be. And finally, on page 7, something we've been watching over the past year, and we're still pretty well, particularly in that $5,200 category, we spent about $766,000 less to date than we had through the same period in 2018. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Paolo?
No, not a question, this is a request. Well, I'll talk to you offline about it.
Thank you.
The next item is item 8, your consent agenda. We have two requests for district activity funds. Ms. Scotty would like to donate $750 to the National Night Out event. And Mrs. Page would like to donate $300 to that same event on August 6th. Those are the only requests I have in this time.
Do you want to roll share?
Ms. Burke? Seven.
This will move by Ms. Door and second by Ms. Ellen to approve the district activity funds. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
I'm staying.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Scotty? Yes, Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
motion passes seven zero. The next item is item 9, other informational items. And I believe all of those items will pose it to board to review. And they are to receive a G R T C partnership summary, C P I updates, a financial and budget update, and a nutrition update. I'm sorry, I don't believe the financial update was of those, of the other items.
It's actually what we just discussed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Your next item is attended business.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 14th, at Harwood, B C U and communities and schools invites everyone to the city of Richmond to come out with our back-to-school backpack drive. We're going to collect, we're going to put together 13,000 backpacks. So we invite family members, that's right, every elementary child in the city of Richmond will receive. And I will pass it on to you so that, I will, Mr. Harris has already put it on the website.
It'll be coming out in the upcoming.
Excellent. Well, we're looking forward to it. We invite everybody to come out, family event. And partnerships this year have gone beyond over here in place last year. So that's why we're moving to a triple in our event, our numbers. And we want, and we invite every school board member to come out. And every Karen, and every child, and everybody in the administration, let's just have a good time, a little white project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paolo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to share a couple of exciting things. One is a volunteer opportunity that I hope many in the room will consider attending, which is on July 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Carver Elementary. We will be removing old seats from the auditorium and replacing them with new, well, with new-to-us seats from St. Catherine's. We've had, we had an incredible amount of support to yank those chairs out and put them in storage. And it's going to require even more to install the newer chairs and remove the old ones. But I'll be talking about that plenty ahead of that event. And then the other thing I wanted to note is also related to Carver Elementary, which I'm not sure if other board members have been notified yet, but I would encourage any who are available on August 2nd, and I can share some details. There will be a ribbon cutting for, to celebrate Carver's grant, Carver being a grantee of the loads of love grant. So we will be celebrating that on the 6th.
Next item?
Next item is an act.
So next title?
Next item is close.
For sure, the same 2.2 that is the model A1 and 2 of the Court of Virginia's mandatory spending that the school boards that are going to celebrate, convenient process to discuss with effective candidates for employment and assignment, promotion, performance, the motion salary, discipline, or reservation of employees, the conditions, including consideration of the human resource agenda of this state, and performance of the three school board employees. And for consultation with legal counsel and repaid by the staff of the school consultants pertaining to the active litigation existing in 1718 national warrant and for the 178743 and 1787 national war. Where this consultation or repaying the COVID meeting would have an effect in negotiating for the estate of the school board, 10 wars, a case with legal counsel employed or state house board providing, specifically in the opinion of legal advice by the search council. Second, hold on.
It's been moved out of Dr. Sapini and Dr. Paolo. On the, on the favor.